Oh, he had that one.
Have your attention please. Welcome to the zoning board meeting of February 27, 2017. My name is Mike Higgins, I'm the chairman. To my left, the vice chair, Mr. Cavares. Board members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Hemel, Mr. Ray Dell. To my right, to your left, the pork, Ms. Murphy. And the head of inspectional services, he's in the back, Commissioner Duca. If you have a cell phone or a pager, could you please put on vibrate or silent not to interrupt the meeting? If anyone's gonna testify tonight, please stand up and raise your right hand, please. If anyone's gonna testify. If you think you might testify, stand up and raise your right hand. If you think you might testify, anybody, stand up, raise your right hand. If not, don't testify. Thank you.
Do you swear by the truth, the help truth, without the truth to help you God?
I do.
Have a motion or wait three minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of February 13.
Second.
On the motion, standing on our favor, opposed, so move. I have a letter here for Z-17-108, 365 Newport. You want to move it to 327, have a motion for it.
Mr. Chairman, number Z-17, 108. There is 365 Newport Avenue LLC for various, we struck a new 14 year residential structure and premises number 365 Newport Avenue. Make a motion to continue the hearing on March 27.
Second.
On the motion, standing on our favor, opposed, so move. Case number Z-17, 117. McDonald's Real Estate Company, I have a letter here, they want to move it to March 27.
Mr. Chairman, Z-17, 117. McDonald's Real Estate Company for special permit to reconfigure the drive-through leaves on 273 and 295 Hancock Street. So the one menu board and associate candidate will be removed, the other menu board will be moved across the 14 feet, the other candidate will be moved across the 12 feet, onto 295 Hancock Street. They want to understand that on the premises number 273, 295 Hancock Street. Make a motion to continue the hearing on March 27.
Second.
On the motion, standing on our favor, opposed, so move. If anyone's here for Newport Ave. or McDonald's, they're gonna be here at March 27. On the new business, case number Z-18-5. I have a letter here, they'd like to continue that to March 13.
Mr. Chairman, number Z-18-5, L.J. Pedro, Marries, provides the existing single family home. It did three one bedroom, was an actual US, by raising the roof to create a third floor, constructing a rear addition on a premises number 33 Edison Park, and the government can continue the hearing on March 13.
Second.
On the motion, standing on our favor, opposed, so move. If anyone's here for Edison Park, that's gonna be held March 13. Back on the old business, case number Z-17-113. Gore Two Green, Bavarian, trying to construct an addition, the premises number 3234 Holyoke Street in Quincy. Is your advocate a representative here?
Committeeing board members, for the record, Steve DeRoche, the front of Valley survey. Officers are identified, White Street, here in the city of Quincy. We were about four to six weeks ago to present this proposed addition to the premises on the 3234 Holyoke Street. After much back and forth, we were asked if we could cut the size of the addition down to commit it to seven bedrooms. So what I plan to study is not just down by one to six bedrooms. He's actually reduced the size of the new addition also. He has a concern that's made about green space, having green space on the property. So with those two items, and what you'll notice is that the new addition on the rear was pretty much hugging the rear property line. But now with the stairways, it would be like three and a half feet off the property, and the building itself is gonna be on seven and a half feet off the property. So we think we've taken some measures here to make this a fairly decent project. And if the board has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Steve, on the back to get out to the backyard there. Is there a, is that through a study, there's a set of doors?
Yeah, there will be a door, a doorway there.
That's the questions I have. Anyone else?
I have no questions.
No questions on this night?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm having trouble too. I got the rain a rock, she missed me, I guess. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor? Speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, no. I have a letter from the DPW, not exchanged, they have no changes, they have no comments. Is there anyone opposed around the side? First call, second call, third call, closed. That's exactly what I was.
Yeah, I think that's what I was hoping.
I'll be going. Mr. Ray Dell?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, number Z-17, 113, Herbert Green, Bavarian, finding construction issue on the premises number 3234 Holyoke Street. Make a motion to grant the variance and find the.
Second.
On the motion, standing on our favor, opposed, so move. Thank you.
Thank you very much, board members.
Thank you.
On the old business, case number Z-1795, Gore Fire and Appliance, the advocate a representative here. You seem to have halfway there, council, build him down.
The other half is up to you. Mr. Chairman, good evening. For the record, Christopher Harrington. My law office is at 21 McGrath Highway. And I represent the Gorham Brothers, Gorham family, in this application for variances. This project was before you, back in the fall. We made a commitment to the mayor's office to tear down the house and take that building down and get rid of that ISO, which of course we were always planning on doing anyway. But to get that building gone and off the street to improve the appearance of that whole neighborhood and work street. And we've done that, and now we're back before you to ask you for your vote to approve this project. I know that you heard this presentation quite some time ago. I don't want to bore you if you remember all of it, but if I need to refresh your memory, I'm happy to do that. We're basically tearing down a house that's approximately 2,400 square feet and replacing it with a 2,500 square foot addition on the Gorham Fire Equipment Building. So we're essentially trading equal amount of space that we're taking away and replacing it with new commercial space for Gorham. The zoning for this business is Business B. In the Business B zone, you're allowed to have a maximum FAR of 1.5. Our project with the addition is .42. So we're less than a third of what the maximum density is that's allowed in Business B. Business B allows four stories, we have two, so we have half the number of maximum stories. And we're required to have 10 parking spaces for a building this size, and we have 13. So we believe that this project is a great improvement all around for this property. We're gonna get rid of, we've already gotten rid of a really crappy old house that was an ISO for the neighborhood. We're gonna replace it with an addition for a business that's been here in the city of Quincy for 42 years so that they can continue to thrive in the city of Quincy and stay here rather than move out of the city. This project is good. The site currently has no stormwater management structures on it whatsoever. So this new stormwater management system is added to the site for the first time. So a nicer building, better looking, better stormwater management, more parking, more landscaping. And we get to keep a good Quincy business in the city of Quincy rather than having to move out of the city to another location.
Thank you, councilor. I think it's gonna look nice if that were sold. Ugly, ugly thing, it was nice to see it gone. I have no question right now. Anyone have any question?
I have a question.
Don't.
You can have a seat.
Thank you.
I know everyone spoke on it already. I'll be going.
I should be going in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Likewise, in favor as well.
On the motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, number Z-17-95, Gore Fire and Appliance, Bavarian, finding to follow a existing two-family house and constructing a two-story addition at 10 parking lot of existing business on premises number 288 and 292 Wilt Street. Make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, standing on our favor, opposed, so move. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, councilor. On the new business, case number Z-18-6. Ken Nygen, Bavarians, to rebuild the second floor for eight-foot ceiling height on premises number 116, Groomefield Street. The advocate a representative here.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Marion Wen and you, I am, perhaps Wen. I am an attorney at Todd and Welborn Federal Street. However, I come here really more in the capacity of support for my father. He is Han Wen. He is the owner of this property and asking for the variance. Just by way of background, members of the board, my parents who are work here actually just live right around the corner. They live just a few feet away from this house. They kept their eyes on it for quite some time. When it was finally on the market, they jumped at the opportunity to live on this house. It's actually on Quincy Shore Drive, facing the water. And if you've ever been in that area, you've noticed that it's been run down for quite some time. I think probably about 10 years. No one's really kept it up. It's been, quite frankly, an ISO in that particular corner. My father now getting this, having this opportunity to renovate it is very excited to spruce it up. We would ask for a variance just in one regard, and I think that's really raising the roof level here. If you saw how the house is constructed, you see that there are two narrow sides to the house. Those are on the second floor. If you had the opportunity to actually go inside the second floor, you'll find that there are two bedrooms. However, even just at my height of 5'2", I'm already smacking my head against those ceilings. I think I believe there's six and a half feet. And he is asking that he has permission to raise it to just eight feet. The number of rooms, bedrooms will be the same. Structurally inside, the number of rooms really won't change. It's just the height that's gonna be the issue now. I think the problem is that where the sidewalk and the spacing towards sidewalk, it's already at 15 feet, and there's no really way to push it back to 25. So we would ask for your permission to add this variance.
This is two bedroom, two bath upstairs, correct?
Yes, it's two bedroom, I think only one bathroom, no.
We're gonna have two baths up there now, right?
Yes, yes.
It's still four bedrooms, correct?
Correct.
I have no question.
Nice garage.
Well, actually, I don't know if you've ever noticed it, but when I first bought it, there was literally like a hole.
Yeah.
Probably fix this one.
I sent the park across the street a couple of days ago.
Oh, okay.
No question. I think it's a good property. No questions?
Yeah, I think it's great. Thank you. Nice, nice piece of property. Glad to see somebody's got something with it. No questions?
You can have a seat. Is there anyone here that likes to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, closed, opposed, opposed? I have a letter here from DPW dated February 5, 160 Groomefield Street, case number Z-18-6. You can have a seat. We have a good above reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed around the side? Opposed around the side, first call, second call, third call, closed. They just wanna raise this, you know, see the exact structure.
Built for little kids, I guess, I'm there. Close could actually be there. Bobby, though, in favor?
Likewise, in favor.
On the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, number Z-18-6. And Wen for a variance to rebuild the second floor of eight foot, for eight foot ceiling height on premises number 160 Groomefield Street. I think a motion for a variance.
Second.
On the motion, standing on our favor, opposed, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Further on tonight's agenda, case number Z-18-7. Paul McLean, Bavarians, to construct a family room and deck on the premises number 25 Dale Ave. The advocate a representative here. Take your name and address for the record, please.
Paul McLean from 25 Dale Ave.
Once you have the floor, once you tell us what you want to do.
I just want to add, we just know family room, I just recently got married, expanding our family. It's just been nice to have some more living space.
And that's right beside the sunroom, the final number, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's also a deck there that we've taken down as well.
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions, sir?
No, I don't have a question. No question.
Mr. Ray Dell?
No questions.
You can have a seat. Is there anyone here that likes to speak in favor? First call, second call?
Thank you. I'm Ron McDonald, I live at 28 Dale Ave near. There's directly across the street from Paul and Kim. I've lived there for more than 30 years with my wife and two fresh dogs. I'm here today with some friends of ours who are also from the Pennsville neighborhood, which is also the association of Paul and Kim. They were asking for a small extension to the back of their house. Remember, there's also a sunroom there and a deck. So those are being moved, and then the extension would be perhaps an additional five feet. They were asking for this so that they can make this house, the house they're gonna be in forever more suitable to the way they wanna live and for children. And that's all.
Thank you.
So this does not affect us at all, and we would look favorable on this.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for hanging in, Paul.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that likes to speak in favor? Second call, third call, call up out of here and close. I have a letter here from the DPW, February 5, 2018, 25 Dale Ave, case number Z-18-7. We have reviewed above reference project and have no comment. Is there anyone opposed around the side? Opposed around the side, first call, second call, third call, closed. I think it's nice for our house, I think it helps the neighborhood too.
Yeah. I'm in favor, Mr. Chairman. I think the back will look as good as the front. Yeah. In favor.
On the motion, please. Yes, Mr. Chairman, number Z-18-7. Paul McLean for a variance to construct a family room and deck on the premises number 25 Dale Ave. Make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, standing on our favor, opposed, so move. No question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further on tonight's agenda, Z-18-8. Paul and Denise Murphy. Bavarians to add a new living area and extend the sunroom on the premises number 1361 Quincy Shore Drive. The advocate a representative here.
Paul Murphy, I live at 1361 Quincy Shore Drive, I'm the owner, and my wife.
What would you like to do?
We'd like to extend our sunroom by nine feet. It didn't need to be repaired as is, so we're gonna have to put new windows in, new roof line. And we'd just like to have that extra bit of space for, make it a bit more.
And that's on the side street right there, right behind you?
Yes, it's on, it's on Sunset.
Any questions?
Don't.
Any questions? The advocate?
I have no.
No question. You can have a seat. Is there anyone here that likes to speak in favor? Speak in favor? Counselor?
David Cott from 48 Witten Road, Wardmont Counselor. I went by the Murphy residence a few times, and the addition definitely fits the neighborhood. It is on the side street, Sunset runs straight across, right on the corner, Quincy Shore Drive, as Sunset said. So the addition doesn't bother any neighbors, any bothers. There's plenty of room, and their space that they wanted to work on is in need of a little construction. So the addition down the end of the house will fit in well and be a great addition to the house on the neighborhood.
Thank you, counsel. Is there anyone else that likes to speak in favor? Second call, third call, call up out of here and close. I have a letter here dated February 5, 2018, 1361 Quincy Shore Drive, case number Z-18-8. We have reviewed above reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed undecided? First call, second call, third call, closed. I'm gonna be going.
You may go in favor too.
Likewise, in favor.
Got a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, number Z-18-8, Paul McLean for a variance to grant the variance in the sunroom on the premises number 1361 Quincy Shore Drive. Make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, standing on our favor, opposed, so move. Thank you. No question. Case number Z-18-9, Robert Kane for special permit for plane. Bavarians trying to demolish the existing home on Lot 1 and an addition to the home on Lot 2 on the premises number 153, 155 Rock Island Road. Counselor, have you spoken to Mr. Kane?
Yes, I have. Actually sat with Mr. Kane and went over the plans extensively, but a week and a half ago.
Okay. Hey, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, Mike Higgins, members of the board. But Murphy, my name is Robert Kane, 155 Rock Island Road. I'll be representing myself tonight. And just a quick thank you to Counselor McCott for meeting with me, going over these plans. Also former Counselor LaFaris, who's a lot of help, Jay Duca, and then all of the building, putting all this together. Quick background on the property and family, just give a little bit of a story. My wife Kim and I raise in Quincy. I grew up at this address, 155 Rock Island, for most of my life, and moved back there now for quite some time enough. We got married, a couple of daughters that are in Quincy Public Schools. We both went through the Quincy Public Schools. She's still a teacher, very involved in Quincy in general. Approaching the Quincy, she's a sacred hot basketball program, president of Quincy lacrosse. Just kind of give you a little background of where we are and, you know, trying to keep it that way. Bought the property, my grandfather bought two homes, one at 153 and the other at 155 Rock Island about 40 years ago. We've been living there now for about 17 years since we got married. When we moved into 155, the lot in the front, my father and grandfather were living in the house at 153 in behind. It makes up a lot, maybe a lot, two on that one. Unfortunately, since then, both my father and my grandfather died. My father just this past October, so that house now sits unoccupied, 153 Rock Island. And so this proposal is to do something with that property. And just one other point, so at this time, it's split into the two lots. It used to be one, two houses, it's now two or two. The proposal is to demo the home at 153 Rock Island, which would then refer the two lots back to one lot and basically replace that structure with a new structure, which would be attached to 155 Rock Island where I currently live. And then, you know, this comes into a few different zoning regulations. But the way I look at it is, you know, trying to essentially improve the current situation in a few different ways. You know, one, it does actually move it off the side lot to the side property lines slightly. Not a lot, it's still tight as everything else is in housing act, but it's a little bit of an improvement. It also adds two off-street parking spaces. There's currently two, it would move to four with the garage. And it also just, like I said, essentially replaces one structure, which is, you know, really more than 20 years. If we've old it, however old it is, you know, it's debilitating, the foundation is wearing down, there's extensive work. The roof itself would need to be completely replaced. So essentially replacing that with, you know, something brand new, which hopefully will improve it all. And we, you know, I was actually in front of this board 10 years ago, when I did the home over at 155 Rock Island. Similar situation, it was a demo and rebuilt. You know, hopefully that was the improvement that I had said it was going to be, and I think it would be more received by the neighborhood. And I'm essentially looking to do something very similar with this property. You know, by no way, you know, given that background, just to show you, you know, no way I would do, try to do anything to, you know, make this neighborhood any worse, or do something that, you know, my immediate neighbors and friends would, you know, I guess, look down on anyway. Thank you, Herrnis. Any questions on the table?
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Go down to Darrow Street, and we have the same thing on a lot of homes. We have garages that were turned into homes, Bell Street, same thing. Why isn't this a two-family home, a residence A, any different than one of those homes?
I don't know exactly which properties you're talking about. I think this, in my mind, is going over with Dave and others. There's already two homes.
Oh, it's a net gain too, I get that.
Yeah.
I get that. What are you gonna have on paper? And I get the net gain, I understand yours. I understand yours because of where it is and what, I really do. But there is homes like that on Bell Street, there's homes like that. Dual residences, shared driveways, there's, what makes it that not be any different than yours? That's all I wanna know. We believe that that's different than these homes here. That they couldn't turn a two-family into a two-family. Have a zero net gain.
Okay. Could I have a little more information about those properties you're talking about? I don't know those situations.
I mean, you live in housing act all your life, right?
Right.
Bell Street, it's like 15, 17, 19. Darrow Street is, I don't know the numbers, there's probably three down there. A couple of my buddies own a couple of them. What's the difference on a, on a, on a net gain? A two-family house is zero, I understand.
Yeah.
But what I understand is, in a residence A, you put a two-family home.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's my question. You guys, any questions, you guys. I understand that piece of property because of what? Those things are like teeny, teeny, these little, little bigger. So the whole lot, if you made it, you could put up some two of your own, so. I'm just looking at the back of the plans here.
Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, I think we came to this plan and this final solution other than trying to either rehabilitate or, you know, demo the existing, and stay on that same footprint. Still two homes in that, you know, overall area. So that was, I think, option one. But they would be separate homes, and, you know, I know technically this is given to be a two-family and a rez A. In my mind, it's an addition for our family.
Right, I mean. Go ahead, go ahead.
You left all the loot in that, you know, structure until recently?
Yes. Well, the 153 is the address. I'll see what laws. It's been pretty much dis-repaired, that's why they ask. I'm sorry, say it again. This seems to be a lot dis-repaired, that's why I ask.
Oh, it is, that's why they're doing this.
It is. Thank you. No.
Is the new structure gonna be the separate section for the second, for the two-family? Or is it up and down split? I mean, you're gonna have.
No, side by side.
Is that the question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it would be a new structure side, right, with the garage and the living space involved next to the existing home at 155.
It won't be connected, it won't be connected?
It will be connected, yes, yes. Definitely will be connected.
Wait. No further questions, thank you.
Your honor, has a proposed pool in the back? Yes, but from my understanding, recently, is it, it's a two-family that would not be allowed. But originally, we were told to put it on at this point, just so that... But originally, we were told to put it on at this point, just so that any, you know, future options were seen at this point. And it wasn't a, you know, a something I have to bring again and then later.
So, if you approve a two-family, there will be no pool in the back?
Uh, I would still have to get clarification on that. I just was told that as I turned in the plans for this meeting. I do not know for sure, I'll be honest.
Thank you.
So, is there comment? So, in the proposed addition, the garage is yours or the new, or the second structure? Who would have occupancy for the garage?
Uh, that would have to be shared, I suppose.
Okay.
It's a, there's a current easement on the driveway and the claim would be to keep, you know, an easement between the two for the future garage as well.
These two properties are going to be joint, correct?
Yes.
Alright, see it? So, so why would you need easement?
Well...
Uh, won't need an easement, no, I was just saying, it's a current easement to share the driveway between the two, but it would be shared going forward between the two as well. But I would think it should be an easing for the, sorry, there should not be an easing going in the future. It would be shared.
I didn't, I didn't know, because when you're saying that, I used to kind of think that this is going to be sold or something.
And then, the... So, you're not, you're not intending to, you're intending to have your family occupy the second unit?
There is zero intention to ever rent or do anything different. I have two young children.
Is there common entrance there on that second building? Or is it, like, is there, is there going to be closed off? I'm just trying to, I'm trying to differentiate, like, I'm confused here about the... So, it's two separate buildings that are conjoined?
Yes.
With a common, like, is it an open entrance? Is it a doorway? Is it...
There'll be the door that's in the middle.
Yeah.
Comes out. So, from the driveway is an entrance.
Yeah.
And then, there'll be an entrance to...
Your...
The left side and to the right side.
Okay.
New structure and the old structure. But it would be a front-facing door.
In some type of common area right there. So, you will have, you will have an ultimate, like, a real two-family, even though it's not... Your intention to use that today as another...
Right, yeah, absolutely. Technically, this is going to be a two-family structure when it's done, yes.
Yep.
He's got grandpa's bedrooms picked out, right?
Unfortunately, grandpa died last year.
Do you have, uh...
They have bedrooms.
They is, they is now, yes.
Do you have, um... Sorry, lost my train of thought there.
Okay. Sorry about that, Mr. Brady.
I'm completely confused.
I'm completely confused too. I'm with you, I agree.
What you're saying today is that, one, you want to have a two...
Kane, let's come on up here and kind of go through this plan.
You just want to have a two-family house, but you can't have your children living? You would want...
Not right now.
No, no, not right now.
So, you'll rent it out?
No, I'm not renting it out.
Then what do you do with it?
Uh, that's just going to be extra living space or not. Now, in the future, it's a...
Extra apartment could just living space? Now, you totally want a big house, I would say that's good.
Alright, so, if I write this minute to knock down that house in the back, which is unoccupied, doing nothing but taking up area?
Yeah.
I would do that.
Yeah.
But if I do that, I'm told that becomes, you know, I wouldn't be able to then add on that one road. So, at this point, I need to get approval to do the entire project. But I have no intention of that being lived in, other than, I don't know, office space or...
What they, I think they're asking is, why not just make a single-family home?
Even with an addition?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's my issue.
One big addition, all one family.
That, I thought it had to be a two-family, considered a two-family.
No.
So, if, but if, for these plans, if we want to have...
For those plans?
Yeah, if we want to have in the...
If we change those a little bit, make it a one-family home?
But if it was ever to be used for my kids, not today because they're 12 and 14, but forever, would that not have to be a two-family if there was going to be a bedroom, living room, kitchen, bathroom?
No, you can have more kitchens than one in your home, as long as there's a common entry. As long as there's a common living there. In other words, as long as they can walk around your house and you can walk around their house? Get to it without going to lock doors or walls or going outside and coming in? It's okay.
My quick answer to that is, if we were going to build something like this, I'd rather have a door that goes into one and a door that goes into another and have that space. The breezeway space and the shared space in the middle.
I know what you're saying, but it's not you, it's down the road, what I'm saying. Somewhere down the road, 15 years from now. This guy wants to not put his pool in, he wants to put something else and back on addition on his place. And this one wants an addition on this side. Next thing you know, you got house from hole to hole. And you got, you can have three families living in your own home, so, I mean, you could have 12 bedrooms in that house after you get, after you sell. That's all I'm worried, on one lot of land. Right now, there's two homes. It's going to be a two-family on a residence A, which personally, I just don't believe, I just don't believe that that... We should have a two-family. I'd rather have two separate homes. Somewhere build another home on this lot. Separate, separate home. Instead of connecting, just build a separate home. What's wrong with building another separate home?
Uh, the idea was to just have some yard area. So, the home that sits back here in this, you know, same lot, you know, it's fairly close, diagonal half corner to corner. So, essentially, in that case, if you're building two separate homes, you'll probably stay on the same footprint, which sits in the back here.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not worried about that. I mean, even you got a pool back here, so, where's the living space? Where's the open space? It's just not there if you wanted to do that. So, what's wrong with just two homes? That's all I'm saying. Why not two homes with what you have now? Shared driveway. They're completely separate, they're all separate, they're separate lots of land.
Yeah, the home would still sit back here. You can't really see it, it's a great area.
Right.
So, moving up here, this entire area becomes open.
No, what I'm saying is... I want to see two separate homes, that's what I want. That's just me. Other five other people, or one giant big one. One McMansion, if you want to build it, you have to gel in and you need the space, go for it.
I think that's a...
And I understand what you want to do with the kids now, you want more space in your house with your kids down the road. You can rent it out, I guess, I get. Or give it to your kids, if your kids don't want to live here, they're in California, someone else can be renting out. And it's a two-family, the residence A, that we say no to every single day, that's all I'm saying. I just, it's, and you're a friend of mine, and I know you, and I know your whole family. It hurts me to even say it, but I can't sit here one day and say yes, when I say no the next day. I just, personally, that's me, that's just me. So, I think there's a better, better way, but you still got four other votes here, so talk to these guys here, I mean, that's fine. I'm just, I'm not looking to use Kane, I'm looking down the road and I think there's, there's a better way to take this piece of property and make it a two-family in a residence A.
We've seen, we've seen this from, you know, typical needs of, you know, parents needing to move into a house and...
Yeah.
That's why I was trying to get at the common, you know, common connector and without separate entrance ways. Because, you know, I mean, over the last year, we've probably seen at least 10 of them, you know? And in not one situation did we allow somebody to essentially have two single-family homes in a rez A. And that's part of the allure of, you know, neighborhoods like Hausneck, is that it is a rez A. And that's what we're, we're up here to, you know, attempt to protect. And I think, we all get your circumstances, that it's a, it's a net negative, but looking at it, it will still be, you'll look at it and you'll still notice it's a two-family home. And, and, and then, you know, it snowballs and the next person comes up and wants the same thing that you do.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, I think that's my position, that's where I come from. I'm in a, in a rez A community myself. If my neighbor, I bought my childhood home just like you, if my neighbor came up and had the same proposal, I'd be saying the same thing to them. I'd say, "Sorry, I get it, you know, I get your circumstances, but there's got to be a better solution either. Two, two individual homes or one built McMansion right there and show your, you know, send your kids away."
I mean, if we can come up, Counselor, Counselor step in.
Yeah, I just...
I know we've gone backwards.
No, no, no.
I'd say, maybe he can come up with some ideas that we're not thinking of.
Yeah, thank you. When I sat down with Mr. Kane, like, we sat down and we went over and, you know, I had a couple of concerns. We had the two dwellings and Mr. Kane indicated to me the back dwelling was in pretty rough shape. Basically, he wanted to drag that back dwelling up and connect it to his home. I'm looking at it, saying that if they had just connected, put an addition on the house, which would have been that dwelling.
Right.
And, and forget about the kitchen and forget about the, you know, washing machine and just, they're going to put a very good-sized addition on the back of the house and they would have one entrance way to the main door for now. And then, down the road, way down the road, maybe come back in front of the board at some time, where they wanted to try to separate it or not separate it or come up with another idea. But this way, they could get off the ground and get the board to approve the same layout that he wants without the taste of the two-family, you know, in rez A.
And if he does that, he's just going to make, take down one of those walls where they're connecting, make a big archway and walk through.
Right.
And do that. And then, down the road, if you want to split them up...
Readdress it. That way he could take down that, yeah, take down that structure.
I just feel better, I think the board would feel better. And let people down the road worry about moving that other, other out. We can come up and we can take that plan and put a big archway in there, we can ask Mr. Duca to take care of that first, Mr. Duca?
Yes, sir.
If, if, if the applicant's neighbors are all farthest, look at that. It's a big issue, but, I mean, it's a good, it's a good, it's a beautiful house and it would look beautiful.
It would basically be the same...
As long as it's one rez.
Yeah, it would be the same size of what Mr. Kane's talking now, only one rez, like Sam, Mr. Chairman. Open a wall with one, one common entry. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's perfectly defined by me, it really is.
Okay.
Like, not knowing so many, building, just kind of saying two-family was the way it goes, so that's kind of pushing. If that's what works to...
I'd rather have you see a nice house with a big giant addition, usually the way you want it, down the road with someone else. Ain't going to be around, isn't it? Me and you won't be around.
That's fine by me. Okay, that, that's great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor as a single-family home, not a two-family home, with a jointed wall that will be opened up? Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Second call. Counselor, you do.
I'm in favor.
Want to get on the record, go ahead.
Yes, sir. David Cott, 48 Whitten Road, Wardman Counselor. With those adjustments that we just discussed, I'm in favor of a, a single-family with Mr. Kane's addition going forward with the guidance of the board with the open archway and the single entry.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Caller five in hearing closed, I have a letter here from the DPW, dated February 5th, 153, 155 Rock Island Road. We refuse to submit any Bob Rockin's project, our comments are, our comments are its fault. Provide plan showing the layout of utilities is great. Existing lot parcel should be consolidated into one lot parcel for the development. Consolidation plan shall be recorded by the registry in North Park County, D.C. Upon completion of project as built, showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, benchmarks, defining the total site facility right away and need to be submitted along with fit supply. The as-built plan shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional... Professional engineer. Any other comments, please advise. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Please step forward.
I just, I just, I'm Gail Davidson, I live on Spring...
Wait, wait, you're going to get on the record here.
I'm Gail Davidson, I live on Spring Street, 140 Spring Street.
140 Spring.
And I didn't have a chance to look at the lands, but I'm just concerned about how much closer to the marsh the addition will be.
Yeah. You guys have any plans in the area?
I have a whole plan set, I don't know if you have a smaller one. Uh, the quick answer is no closer to the marsh. If the house that's coming down is actually closer to the marsh, additions would be closer to the marsh.
You want to take one of those small ones?
Yeah.
You have one of those.
Is there anyone?
I got one.
Yeah, right here. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call? Third call? Do you have something? Anything else?
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else?
No, it's just a possibility to the marsh.
Okay. Caller five in hearing closed. If it's Mr. Duca, can I make sure that's opening common the addition instead of a two-family home?
Will do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm in motion, please, I'll be open here. I guess everyone else is in favor of the single family. I'm in favor. Anyone else? Comments?
Single family.
Single family.
Chairman of Z-189, Robert Kane for a special, uh, special permit floodplain, variance finding of existing home on lot one. Additional unit, just an old lot, two hundred percent, 153, 155 Rock Island Road. I make a motion to grant the special permit. The floodplain, dairy, lot of variance defining to include or expand the house for one family. Expansion additions to a one-family house, yet you stay a one-family house.
Second.
Second.
Exactly.
Motion, seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor.
I was going to express my support. You guys are cranking through, because I'm not at the meeting, like, what's going on?
Very wishful, everyone in favor, done, opposed, done.
Perfect, perfect, yeah, no, it, really not.
Counselor, single-family house, residence A.
I know it, I see it, I support it. Very unique situation. Worked a lot of time working on it, so, great, great family, keep running there.
Absolutely, that's the next.
Awesome.
Alright, uh, Ms. Vice Chair, Stephanie Crowe, I believe.
Stephanie Crowe.
Stay, stay here anyway. Brian, uh, you want one? To him, will you want? You want one? No, only six of us want, right, just that's five?
Yeah.
No one else?
No one.
Franklin, this one too? Okay. Yeah. If the Counselor... Mr. Hamilton.
Frank in the heat? Other than last... Sorry, I'm just... Yeah, stop. Let me take two minutes and then we can stop. Someone has to go to rest.
She's not elected.
She said that on camera.
I just, I don't understand that, I mean, like...
Well, they're both like 3,000 square foot lots, they're tiny lots.
They're tiny lots, it should be, I mean, it should be one lot, should be one lot.
How big is the addition? Is he putting another 2,000 square feet on the back?
It's big, it's big, but, I mean, I mean, the big houses happen nowadays, you know, I mean...
No, they do, but it's almost like what's happening up in Quincy Center right now. It's not cool when you have a new building and then forge a crappy building, like, it'd be nice to knock them all down.
No, I mean, Rock Island Road, there's a lot of updated homes, you know? I mean, she literally, it's literally across the street from Margaret's house. She'd be the one that would be impacted the most. I just, I didn't understand, I have a parking lot of a garage, tell me that you're going to, you know, you have two separate dwelling units, but stacked parking garage, like, I'm like, this is, it's just, it's a single-family home, just make it a single-family home. Living a big 4,000 square foot, seven, 4,000 square foot.
Well, that's what it is, you can build, you can put on a super addition if you've got the space in your yard.
Ah, you got the space, you got the money, do it. A bunch, every single one of them said no. At least, we had that one and, yeah. The next day? Yeah.
If there was a zoning regulation, like where I am and where I am, you can only add 50% of your square feet to your building. So, like, you know, if we had a restriction saying that you can... So like, you know, if we had a restriction saying that you can, you can't.
I wouldn't mind seeing some leniency on the use of, like, in-law apartments, but what happens is, like, we had one or two, but it didn't in-law through years ago, not even, probably like ten years ago, the couple now that deceased passed away, so the parents passed away, the daughter sold the house, and the guy's running an Airbnb, which, again, do I have a big problem with it? No, am I direct abuddies with the guy? No. You know, if I was, would I be pissed off at this, you know, different people on my street every day in a rez-ay? Kinda, you know?
You'll have to rent it as an Airbnb client, bro, okay, pal.
Yeah, just tear the place apart, you know? I mean, but am I gonna be a little bit, I mean, that's what I bitch for, that probably wouldn't, probably like, whatever, you know? Although I say that, but like, my neighbor was, uh, one of my neighbors was running his private psychology practice out of his house, and I reported that, because you can't have a whole business that.
Like, left you a lawyer.
Can't, if it has, uh, a lot of, uh, consummate title.
Okay. So you know almost everything as well, pretty much of it. Like, who's that guy that developed?
The block box, I know.
That developed the, um, the old, old Boston, the old, um, motel, it was right on the water, bottom, it was a giant house, right on Hancock Street, that, um.
I don't know that guy. I know the giant house.
You know the giant house? Like, if you look at that, like, that one's unbelievable, the amount of, like, actually gross area, it's like ten thousand.
It's disgusting.
You know what I'm saying?
He used the entire lot from outside, I have no idea how he got him, but maybe never came in front of you.
Well, because it's a single family.
It took the entire lot, go look at the house.
No, I told, no, it's the biggest thing, and he's, well, he's the corrupt developer, and again, they let him do the development. I traced the names back, and I'm like, oh my God, I believe in this. Abrams, I think is the address.
We can't fix it. We just gotta fix the.
You're mistaken, Mr. Chairman.
How come they make like, sometimes they keep on old case when there's a lot of people here till the end?
If we could come to order, uh, this case number Z-18-10. Warren Place LLC for com, comprehensive permit to develop traditional-style building containing residential units on the premises number fifty-four, fifty-six, Warren Ave, sixty, sixty-two, Warren Ave, one-eighteen, one-twenty, Oakwood Ave. Uh, the Assistant City Solicitor, Janet Peckin is here to explain to you, we voted no, and went to court, you people, I guess, went to court with it. Not coming back to us. She's here to explain what happened and, and where it is. But, uh, right now, it's not coming back to us, this is just for informational purposes, there won't be no comments taken tonight, and no one will be able to speak on record here tonight about it because there's nothing, a record, we denied that project. Counselor, if you might, you could take, uh, either come back here, leave in my seat, or you can stand there, whatever you like.
What about, what about these here?
Whatever's good for you.
Um, here's mine. So, um, first, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you tonight. I think it's important, uh, that I put the city's position forward, what they've got to this project, because it's, it's not a usual public hearing, as, as you said, Mr. Kane, a vote has already been taken on this project. Uh, so I'd like to do tonight is just go over the history, what's happened and where we're at now. So between the Planning Board and the Zoning Board, there have been six public hearings in two years on this project. So the purpose tonight is really more informational because of the publicity that surrounded this project recently, and also, uh, because of some misinformation that's been circulated. So the first public hearing before this board on the project numbers Warren Place was on July fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. It was continued until August eleventh, and in the interim, the Planning Board heard a, heard a, I'm sorry, had the hearing. The original proposal was for a fifty-two unit, four-story building with forty-three parking spaces. This is in the Weston section of Quincy. Revised plans for a forty-unit building with thirty-five parking spaces were submitted to the Planning Board on August sixth of two, two thousand fifteen. Now, the Planning Board went through their process of due and due diligence, they engaged an independent engineering peer reviewer, and there were reviews by the Health Department, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Permanent Revenue. The Planning Board found that the developers complied with the zoning code, special permits and site plan review, and things they considered were the need for new efficient, energy-efficient and safe housing, and the fact that the majority of this housing would be in an industrial B district. They issued their decision on September ninth of two thousand fifteen. When the project came back before this board, it had the support of then-Counselor-at-Large Doug Gutfro, and it also had the support of the Quincy Chamber of Commerce. Only two people spoke against it, while a third spoke with just a concern about parking and snow removal. On September sixteenth of two thousand fifteen, this board granted variances and issued a finding for a forty-unit building with thirty-eight parking spaces. I've heard comments in this, since I've been involved in this process, that no person in a single-family home should have to live next to an apartment building. And it's important to remember that this development is proposed in a Residence B and industrial B zoning districts. Multi-unit buildings are allowed in Residence B, and buildings up to eight stories are allowed in industrial B districts. On September twenty-third of two thousand fifteen, two abudders sued the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, and the developer in all forms to area court. An agreement for judgment was filed in that case in January of two thousand seventeen. And what that means is that the plaintiffs, who were the abudders, voluntarily dropped that action, and the agreement specifically provided that nothing prohibited the developers from submitting any new application relating to the property to the city. So when the project came back before the Zoning Board on April twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, it came back pursuant to Chapter Forty-B, which is known as the Comprehensive Permit Law. That is a law that is often misunderstood. It was enacted back in nineteen sixty-nine to facilitate the construction of low or moderate income housing and to assist communities with their planning. So under the new project, the developers sought to build a forty-unit building with four three-bedroom units and thirty-six one-bedroom units. The proposal is for a four-story building with underground parking. It has never been for a six-story building, which is a rumor currently circulating. At this, at this hearing, there were ten neighbors who spoke against the project. So this board scheduled the second public hearing on May twenty-third. There were letters read in favor of the project and letters read in opposition to the project, and neighbors spoke both for and against it. This board voted to deny the project at the third public hearing on June thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, and the developer appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee, which is a division of the State Department of Housing and Community Development. They have jurisdiction specifically over Forty-B appeals. The role of the Housing Committee is to determine if the board's decision was reasonable and consistent with local needs, which means balancing the need for affordable housing against local concerns. It's a very high standard, and it's one that we could not meet, given our approval of the prior version of this project. In fact, there is what's called a rebuttable presumption that the need for housing outweighs the local concerns underlying the denial of the permit, and issues such as traffic and inconvenience are not sufficient. The HAC decisions, the Housing Appeals Committee overwhelmingly favor developers, and they do have, uh, remedial powers. And there is a need for affordable housing in Quincy, which is why the city has an affordable housing ordinance and an affordable housing trust committee. A complaint that is frequently heard by the administration is that long-term residents can no longer afford to live here. In fact, there was a recent newspaper article that rents in some of the new apartments are starting at twenty-two hundred dollars a month for a studio and five thousand dollars a month for three-bedroom apartments. So Chapter Forty-B is often misunderstood, it is like rent control. Even when home values and rents increase, the units will remain affordable under a deed restriction. By regulation, in this project, ten of the proposed forty units must be affordable, and of those ten, one must be a three-bedroom. So who will live in these apartments? We've heard comments that it's going to bring crime and, uh, other things, but the reality is, I expect the demographics of these apartments will match those currently in the neighborhood. A middle school, special education teacher with two children earning sixty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety dollars per year would qualify for one of the three-bedroom apartments. A single person who is a painter or earning fifty-three thousand four hundred seventy dollars would qualify for a one-bedroom apartment. And a couple employed as a home health aide and a restaurant cook earning a combined income of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars would qualify for a one-bedroom. And these are figures from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. The next step in this process is a view on March twelfth at ten fifteen. The, uh, chairperson for HAC, the presiding officer here in this case, will be at the site with counsel. It's open to the public, anyone can attend. If board members come, you're welcome to attend also. Again, it's not going to be a deliberation because the decision here has already been made, it's to give the presiding officer the opportunity to view the property, view the area, and see what the concerns are. Thereafter, a hearing will be held at HAC that will be scheduled sometime in May if there are outstanding issues. The HAC regulations provide that a decision must issue within thirty days after the termination of the hearing unless the applicant agrees to an extension. It's possible that this case will come back before the board if HAC orders that the board issue the Comprehensive Permit. If the board chooses not to do that, then HAC can order the permit itself. So there might very well not be any decision that this board will have to make, other than the denial that has already been done. It's essentially, your denial's been appealed, it's before HAC, and it is essentially their decision. So if anyone had any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that is the status of what has happened and what's going on now.
And that meeting is March twelfth?
March twelfth at?
Site.
The site. Some of us are going to meet here in the lobby.
Which time?
Uh, it's, if you're meeting at the site, it's at ten fifteen. The Commissioner takes public transportation, so we're gonna meet here and I'm gonna drive her down there. Anyone wanted to join us, they're welcome to, but otherwise, people are just going to be meeting at the site, March twelfth at ten fifteen.
Any questions? So Brian?
The question I have is, regardless of what HAC does, if they grant the permit or they tell us to grant it, and that they grant it again, do the abuddies still have the legal right to go to Land Court to try to stop it, or is the HAC decision final?
The HAC, the decision is final in terms of HAC, it can be appealed to Land Court or to the Superior Court.
Thank you.
Any other question? Who would be appealed?
Uh, been a, been a bud, been abudders, yes, yeah, they can still be. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you allow us to ask you a question, maybe just to get more information?
Go ahead, what do you got?
Okay, my question is, um, for educational purposes, okay? Did this board, was this board, because it had no experience with Forty-B, did it fail to raise the statutory minima in a timely fashion? There are two, there are two statutory minimas, one is if you have a ten percent affordable housing base, and the other, let me finish my question, and then the other is if you have a certain land area that's devoted to affordable housing. And did those have to be raised at a certain time? Because if you now know, if you ever get another Forty-B, then you, if you wanna raise those defenses, you know in the future when to raise them. And I would just like, if she could just, for educational purposes, explain the statutory minima and when those have to be raised if you get another Forty-B in the future.
Certainly, I'm happy to address that. If the board were to rely on one of the statutory minimum, it has to notify the developer within fifteen days so that the developer can have the opportunity to seek an intellectual review of it in HAC. Unfortunately, in this case, the numbers were not available at the time of the hearings. So it took quite a bit of time, me personally, to get all of the information together with new formulas from the state that had come out, and with how numbers have changed here in the city, so the numbers were not available at the time.
I'm not pointing this at you because you, you didn't get involved until later, what I'm saying is the board is, these defenses, if they're available, have to be raised within fifteen days. Now, the question is, is it fifteen days after the developer files his application? Or is it fifteen days after the first hearing? What I'm trying to get at is.
It's fifteen days after the application.
Okay, so because this board might not have the hearing within fifteen days, there has to be some internal controls at the board level so that these kinds of defenses, if they're available, are raised as soon as a petition on the Forty-B is filed. Isn't it so that you don't have to have all that information, you just raise the defense, and then later you can get the details, you've, you've raised it within the fifteen days, and then you have some time to provide the information that you didn't quite have the time to, to gather? So isn't it, isn't it so that, that when an application on the Forty-B comes in, the board should automatically raise these defenses, and then you have time to gather the information?
I, I don't know if that's accurate, I mean, they, they need to know the numbers to be able to say where, where we meet that standard. And the numbers that we had were not available at that time, so that's why they could not be relied on. The, the numbers change because of the new state formula and bodies of water coming out and other things being put back in, uh, for example, train stations, things of that nature, so there were not accurate numbers that it could be relied on.
But the defense wasn't raised when the application was filed?
Not, not without the numbers, correct?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to vote in to adjourn.
All right. The motion's in, in our favor?
Aye.
Close, no more. Thank you.